Well, good morning. Welcome to Sedgwick County Government. We're glad you're joining us this morning, those that are online, those joining us with our television partner KPTS, and those joining us here in person when you walked in this morning. You could have picked up a meeting agenda packet right there at the door. Or if you're watching online, you can always go to sedgwickcounty.org and you can find our meeting agenda packets there. You can also see all the supporting documents that we have at our disposal that we're reviewing today. You can access all of those online as well. If you look at what we have today, the order of business, fairly busy meeting. We have four proclamations. We also have a conversation around the I Voted sticker award, and then Project Search Graduation, which is going to be fantastic. Really excited about that. I say all of that by just saying we like to get pictures of these things, but since we have so many of this happening at one time, if you look at the agenda packet, item H is the first item in new business. That's Project Search Graduation. If those that are here for a proclamation and those that are here for the I Voted sticker contest, if you could wait till after item H, then we're going to break for just a few minutes and just go right out here on the steps to get a picture. That way you can do it all at one time. I promise we'll do our best to try to move quickly so you don't have to wait too long. But if you could wait till after item H, I think it'd be really helpful, and that way we can get good pictures. Okay? We want to celebrate you. So that being said, got a good meeting ahead of us. I'll officially call the meeting of April 17th, 2024 to order. Let's get to work. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invocation to be led by Rabbi Shmulek Greenberg from with Chabad of Wichita. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Almighty God, I invoke your blessing today upon the legislative leaders of the Sedgwick County Commission as they prepare to resume their work on behalf of the citizens of this great county. We ask your divine blessing for all of their constituents, wherever they may be. Gathered here in a chamber of elected leadership, in our prayer, let us recall the preeminent leader, the biblical Moses. As the contemporary spiritual leader, the Rebbe Rabbi Menachem Schneerson of righteous memory explained, Moses was not merely a leader who set guidelines and imparted knowledge to his people, but he also had the unique gift of being able to reveal every individual's inherent potential. Almighty God, please bestow the wisdom upon the elected leaders gathered here today to legislate laws that are not only just and compassionate, but ones that enable all people of this county, of all ages, backgrounds, and cultures, the ability to achieve their true potentials. Please invoke your blessings upon the Sedgwick County Commission as they follow the American tradition of four decades established by U.S. Congress and presidents to mark the 122nd birthday of the great spiritual leader, the Rebbe, on April 9th, 2024, as Education and Sharing Day, USA, here in the great Sedgwick County. A day upon which to recall that education must go beyond the acquisition of knowledge, but must also focus on building moral character. Please give them inspiration and humility to unite across all divides in the pursuit of a just, meaningful, and moral society, as was outlined in your seven universal laws you gave Noah and his descendants after the Great Flood. One of which, the command to govern by just laws, is the purpose of their gathering today. May it be your will, God Almighty, that the tireless efforts of the Commission in these directions be successful, empowering all the individuals in this great county to be decent human beings, considerate of others, reverent of you, and ready to do their bit toward the ultimate goal of a perfect world in which your presence will be manifest. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rabbi. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. I just want to let you know that I am the bearer of good news today, so I wanted to give you that heads up. First, we'll start with the zoo. We have Scott Newland, the president and CEO. We have Jenica King here as well to give you guys a great announcement.
Hey, Scott, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, I just have some really good news that I'm so excited to share with you all. Most of our good news from the zoo gets to the Commission via Mr. Dennis, who is on our board and loves to come and give us, you know, give the Commission all the good news that we have. So today I decided to steal his thunder a little bit and bring the good news myself. You may be aware, our elephant herd at the zoo has four pregnancies right now, and we are so excited to tell you all today that our fifth and final female is also pregnant, which means our entire breeding herd is now expecting, and all five females will be on track to give birth in 2025. So that's going to be a huge year for our team, for our zoo, for our community, and we just wanted to share this exciting news with you. These are just a little reminder as we go through this pretty long gestation period. So elephants have a 22 to 24 month gestation. So they're essentially pregnant for two years. We will start having potential births at the end of next spring, all through next summer. So it's going to be a huge year for us. Just some really cool firsts. So this will be the first elephant ever born in the state of Kansas, and we had to really dig deep into our records to make sure that was the case, but there hasn't been an African elephant born in the state at a zoo before, so we're really excited to do that. If we are successful and all five females have successful births, we will also be the first zoo in AZA to have five elephant births in a single year. So that is a tremendous effort that our, you know, teams have really worked hard for. So this afternoon, you're going to see some announcements come out. The first will come out shortly after we leave the podium here, which will be our social media announcements to all the public about what's going on with our elephant herd. For any media that's in the room, if you have other questions for us, we are going to host a media get together at the zoo at 11:30 this morning. We'll be happy to answer your questions there. But yeah, we just wanted to come today and share this great news with all of you, and so thank you so much.
Scott, that is great news. It's a great achievement for the zoo. One quick question, and then we'll see if the other Commissioners have comments or questions. At the county, we have eight weeks paid parental leave. Does the elephants qualify for this benefit?
No, not the elephants. We may have to come up with something for the elephant team, though, because when we start going into birth watch, it's going to be kind of a round-the-clock ordeal, so it's going to take a lot of eyes at the zoo to make sure that we're successful with this.
Very good. Other questions or comments for Scott? Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you for being here. I appreciate it, Scott. You kept it from the board. I didn't realize that we had five coming. Our male that we brought in has been doing his job pretty well. But congratulations. There are so many fantastic things that are happening at the zoo. This is just one of them. The number one tourist attraction in the state of Kansas. Come out and see it. It's one of the two jewels we have here in Sedgwick County between the expiration place and the zoo. So thank you for what you do. Thanks to the board for their support. It's probably the best board I've ever served on, and I don't take anything away from this board, but honestly, they get things done. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Very good. Other questions or comments? Sarah, Commissioner Lopez, sorry.
That's my, that's my name. Thank you so much for being here. This is really exciting, and I just want to thank you for the work that's gone into this, because I know this has been years of preparation to get here. So really, it's just such an exciting time to be able to celebrate with you, but I thought it was hilarious when you said the gestation time of an elephant. I think I saw every woman in this audience, like, groan, and I'm so sorry, Nicole. Could you even imagine if you had to go that much longer? So just appreciate it, and I'm so happy to hear this. So thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
I would just, again, I'm very excited about this, but I wonder, when will the naming competitions begin?
Well, that's a good question, and we are working through that right now. We haven't completely come up with our finalized plan of how we're going to do that, but I would stay tuned. There's going to be a lot of opportunities to help us name these elephants. If you're not familiar at the zoo, we really like to try to name animals from the areas that they're native to. Culturally significant names are kind of our preference. If you know our elephant herd currently, they all have names from South African regions, minus Stephanie, who, you know, has been our girl for the last, you know, 50 years now. So we are looking at all of those options right now, Commissioner Howell, and we'll be making those announcements.
Well, we have an I Voted sticker campaign as an example of how to do this. I'm sure our students around the county are going to be interested in participating, but I can make this easy. They're native to Sedgwick County now, and we have Commissioners, five of them.
There's five of you.
Imagine Little Elephant Jimmy, okay? That's for me. I think that's a good idea. All right, thank you.
I've been called a lot of things. I don't know if I've ever been called an elephant. Congratulations, Scott. Please tell your team, and particularly those that work with the elephants, thank you, and they got their hands full moving forward. So this is great news. We're happy to celebrate with you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Very good.
And today is a remarkable day, not only for the elephants, but also for the election office. I have Laura Rainwater here. She's the Election Commissioner, and she will be revealing those who won and placed in the I Voted sticker contest. Ma'am?
Good morning, Laura.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. It is an exciting day, because we have exciting news, too. Back in December, we launched the first-ever I Voted sticker contest in the state of Kansas to create, being this a big presidential year, we want to engage our students, educate our students on why elections are important, and the best way that we can do, go about bringing them in and drawing them in is create a contest around an I Voted sticker. So we had over 127 entries in this contest from over 12 different schools, and I believe they are here today to accept their awards. And we're going to start with third place. But before we do that, I want to thank any of our, people ask me who judged these, and I want you guys to know that it was not me. We had an expert panel of judges. There were four of them that all come from the arts and graphic arts industries, and they are Roman Rodriguez, Levi Mabe, Megan Radley, and Whitney Reader. They did a phenomenal job narrowing it down. It was quite a lengthy process that morning on April 2nd, and this is what they came up with. So I have to give kudos to them for volunteering their time for doing that. I also want to recognize the teachers of these students. Before I call the students up here, I want to thank you for incorporating it into your classroom. Voting is the foundation of our country, and it's very important that we start this at an early age. So thank you for incorporating this learning experience for your students into your curriculum. They are Christian Hurst from Mayberry Middle School, Heather Welty from Clearwater Intermediate Middle School, Olivia Roscoe from North High School, she could not be with us today, and Tracy Walker from Pleasant Valley Middle School. So thank you all. Now to the winners. Third place from Pleasant Valley Middle School, she's an eighth grader, Evelyn Baranco. Come on up, Evelyn. The judges could not declare a clear second place winner. They said, it's a tie. We can't decide. So we have two second place winners. The first is Maddie Johnson from Clearwater Intermediate Middle School. She is a sixth grader. Addy is in sixth grade, true talent. She is in 11th grade. Come on down, Lily. And finally, our winner of this year's first-ever I Voted sticker contest, she is an eighth grader at Mayberry Middle School. I don't believe she, she's on her way. She's not here yet, but her teacher is here to accept her award for now. Christian Hurst, he was one of the very first teachers that brought a whole packet of entries into our election office, and he is the art teacher at Mayberry Middle School. So the first place winner is Yamalet Salazar. Yeah. So this sticker will be on the I Voted sticker for both the primary election on August 6th and the general election on November 5th. We are having over 300,000 stickers printed, and will be handed out to everybody that votes this August and November. So we couldn't be more proud. It represents Kansas, the sunflower, the national, the flag. So it really hit all points. I mean, I did not judge, but I think the judges did a great job. All of this artwork, I have zero artistic ability, and all of this artwork is phenomenal.
Yeah. Very good. Commissioner Meitzner.
Laura, thanks for doing this and be creative and engaging the students. This is really a good community effort, and thanks, congratulations to all the students. How many, how many entries did you have?
127 entries this first year alone. So I hope the contest, and we had little mock-up stickers, as you guys have found, of the winning sticker, this is what it will look like. So for a first-year contest, we couldn't be more pleased. We modeled this contest after several across the country, and the advice was get the information out to superintendents of all schools, and that's what I did. I sent the packets to every superintendent, every private school, and they filtered it down to the art and civics teachers, and so next year, I hope it grows.
Well, thank you. And they're all very lucky that, I submitted one also, but you aged.
It was close. You raged out a little while ago.
You disqualified me, so they're very lucky that I wasn't.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyway, congratulations to you all.
Congratulations to all the winners. Thank you, guys.
Commissioner Howell.
Well, the Election Commissioner brought us a tie. I was wondering, did you even consider using the hat? We have a special hat. You draw a name out of the hat.
Yeah, you know, we did not. We felt they both were worthy. They're just beautiful. I mean, it was a tough, look at all of them.
I think they're, I think they're great, and thank you for doing this. It's a lot of fun.
It is.
And congratulations to all those that entered the contest and participating, and for those winners, I think we're very proud of you. This doesn't say Sedgwick County, so is this available for people outside the county if they want to, are we going to offer these to other counties to, you know, to adopt our design, so to speak?
Well, it's funny you ask that, because I've had Johnson County, after we did this, now fashioned an I Voted sticker contest after us. They're running one right now. I had two other counties ask me about how we did our I Voted, because they just think it's the coolest idea ever. But I mean, I suppose if they would like to order it as well.
And do you plan on doing these in the future, different designs?
Every year, I want to do a new one.
So like River Fest, you need to start collecting your stickers.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Get your sticker collection going, because you'll need those down the road. I guess also, I was curious, is this going to be copyrighted, or is this available, however they, however they get out, that's fine.
Correct.
Now, if someone votes by mail, they don't get a sticker.
No, they will. We will send the I Voted sticker with their mail ballot.
Okay. Now, if they, if they use a sticker and they don't return the ballot, that's cheating.
That is cheating. It is.
I don't want them to cheat.
Yeah.
Thank you, Laura, for all you do.
No, it's, it's been fun. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Laura, thank you very much for putting this on. It's exciting to see all of the different award winners that we have today. I want to thank the schools and the school districts especially, because especially the arts departments in each one of them. I have fond feelings towards North High, since I taught there, so congratulations. But congratulations to all the schools and everyone that they entered, and thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. I'm so glad you did this. Thank you so much. It's, this is just such a cool way to engage, I mean, truly the future of our community and getting them engaged early and young, and just what a, what a great opportunity. So thank you for doing this. Thanks to all the students who participated, the teachers that helped, and congratulations to everybody who won. These are just beautiful. Congratulations.
Laura, thank you. Brilliant idea. Congratulations to the winners. Thank you to all those that did participate in this. This is a really good deal to get people engaged, young people engaged, and understanding our process, so kudos to you. Congratulations.
Well, I don't know about you, but my cup is full. I'm very happy and pleased with the good news today, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Nicole? Just a reminder, if you can just stick around a little bit, we'll get pictures right after item H on the agenda. Okay? Thank you, Nicole. Very good. Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
We had no one sign up for public agenda today, so, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting minutes of March 20th, 2024.
Okay. Commissioners, we all had a chance to review the meeting minutes. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 20th and April 3rd of 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations, item C, proclamation declaring education sharing day.
Okay. I'd ask Commissioner Howell to read this proclamation.
I'll say thank you, Chairman Beatty, for this opportunity, and the person that did our invocation this morning is also going to be receiving this invocation, so thank you for being here as well. And I just want to confess upfront, I'm a very phonetic reader, so please, I apologize ahead of time for me not saying these names exactly right. I apologize already. I'll do my best. Anyway, it says, it says, the proclamation says, whereas, the basis for the continuity of any society is education. And in Sedgwick County, the education of our youth is a priority. In order to achieve its highest goals, education must not only impart knowledge, but also teach the students how to live, forming and strengthening their moral character to make a better life for themselves as individuals and for society as a whole. And whereas, a global spiritual leader, the Rebbe, Rabbi, I can't say it, M. Schneerson of righteous memory stressed that a moral and ethical education empowers every individual to develop their full potential in making the world a better place. And whereas, such an education can nurture the unity of diverse peoples through encouraging increased acts of goodness and kindness imbued with the awareness that even a single positive act of an individual can change the world and usher in an era of global peace. And whereas, April 19th, 2024, will mark 122 years since Rebbe's birth, and this year begins the celebration of the 75th anniversary of his leadership of the Chabad Lubavitch movement. And whereas, education and sharing day is observed each year on Rebbe's birthday in recognition for outstanding and lasting contributions toward the improvement of education, morality, and acts of charity around the world, a day to pause and reflect on our responsibility to ensure our youth have the foundation necessary to lead lives rich in purpose and fulfillment through their service and good works. Now therefore, it be resolved that Chairman Ryan K. Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 19th, 2024 as education and sharing day in Sedgwick County, and call upon government officials, educators, volunteers, and citizens to reach out to young people and work to create a better, brighter, and more hopeful future for all. Thank you, Chairman, for the chance to read that proclamation, and I would make a motion to adopt the proclamation.
I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And Chairman, this is to be received again by Rabbi Shmulek Greenberg that gave our invocation, so if you want to come up and receive this, that's great. Love to hear from you, and I would like to ask you also, please correct my poor pronunciation. I practiced, and I completely blew it. My memory just lost it. I tried, and I apologize, but please help me out with the proper pronunciation of those names.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Howell, and thank you all the Commissioners, and thank you everyone for being here today. The chuch is really hard. So it's Menachem M. Schneerson of Chabad Lubavitch. I'm actually really happy that we saw this I vote, I voted sticker campaign, and I think this really comes down to the core of this idea where education is really not necessarily about so much the knowledge imparted, which of course, it is very important, but it's more so for every child to learn to be a mensch, someone with good values, moral values, someone who can add to our society. And the Rebbe, 1974, he launched a campaign, a charity campaign, and it wasn't so much, you know, for big philanthropists and to write the high, the high-dollar checks. It was really about every single person becoming a giver. And he gave the idea where everyone should have in their room, in their office, in their home, a charity box, and every day, they give a coin to charity. And if we condition ourselves to every day, begin the day with something good, with giving to others, that turns us into givers. Instead of it being a random act of kindness, it becomes a routine, a routine act of kindness. And when we become givers, essentially, we become a much better place. So thank you again for adopting this proclamation, and thank you everyone for being here, and I hope that the time will come that we all become givers and we all become good people looking for peace, not just here in Sedgwick County, but which should ripple throughout the world. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Howell.
I just want to say, Rabbi, again, thank you, and, you know, we had a beautiful I Voted sticker campaign this morning about educators and students, and about what voting means, and you already referenced that in your, in your discussion this morning, your prayer this morning, your comments just now, and the next two proclamations, as well as this one, all center on the very same theme. It's about education, and the fact is, we need to celebrate education. You know, I, I am, I am so grateful that I had the opportunity to have good education, and I would love to find ways to learn more all the time. I want to never stop learning, and I think the end of the day, we're trying to improve the lives of those around us, to share truth, and to, and simply just to celebrate education. So thank you for bringing this to our attention today. I, for one, will make a point to celebrate education and sharing today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for reading the proclamation. You did great.
Yeah. Rabbi, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We're happy to celebrate this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item D, proclamation declaring drug-endangered children's day.
Very good. A proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas, whereas there are 140,860 drug-endangered children in Kansas who are at risk of child abuse in their homes while being exposed to drugs through their parents or caregivers' use of drugs by possession, distribution, or manufacturing of narcotics, and recognizing that 5,155 Kansas infants are born exposed to substance misuse every year. And whereas, substance misuse does not create a healthy setting for parents or caregivers to provide a safe environment for the children of Kansas to thrive. And whereas, in Sedgwick County, 18.6% of removals with placement into foster care were due to the substance use of parents. And whereas, through community collaborations of government, schools, nonprofits, and local interested individuals, the children of Sedgwick County in need of intervention can be identified earlier and moved from at-risk to resilience. And whereas, citizens of Sedgwick County can play a role in reducing risk and building healthy families by awareness of the Drug-Endangered Children's Program. Now therefore, it be resolved that I, Chairman Ryan K. Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2024 as Drug-Endangered Children's Day, and urge citizens of Sedgwick County to join in this observation and prevent the impact of drugs on children. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. I make a motion to, to adopt it as read.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And here to accept this proclamation is Cindy Miles. Cindy is a chair of the Sedgwick County Alliance for Drug-Endangered Children. Cindy, we're glad you're here. Welcome.
So I just want to say thank you, Commissioners, for this proclamation. There's approximately 85 to 90% of the children who are removed from the home in Sedgwick[1763.61] 85 to 90% of the children who are removed from the home in Sedgwick County have some tie to drugs. And so that is, is a devastating number for our community. We have not seen that decrease in many years, and we're not expecting it to decrease anytime soon. And drug-endangered children are much more likely to use substances themselves, have chronic diseases like diabetes, heart disease, and obesity, experience mental health issues, and have social problems including financial difficulties and employment challenges. So we appreciate your support of the work that we do for drug-endangered children in, in Sedgwick County, and thank you so much.
Yeah. Cindy, who do you have with you?
So with me, I have Morgan, who is working on her MSW in social work, so she knows a lot about this subject. I have John, and he's with the Urban League of Kansas. He's the family resource specialist there. And then I have Sarah Robinson. For those of you who don't know Sarah Robinson, Sarah Robinson has been involved in child welfare initiatives for approximately 40 years, and she also works at the Urban League of Kansas and helps us develop partnerships there. So, thank you.
Yeah, well. Thank you, Cindy and team. I was honored to read that proclamation. There's 1,300 kids in Sedgwick County in foster care right now. Um, and, uh, there's a lot of work being done in the community, a lot of conversation happening, um, and a lot of collaboration happening in the community. So, uh, continue with this message, this resounding message of the need to serve these vulnerable children. Thanks for being here today. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item E, Proclamation Declaring Week of the Young Child.
Okay, I have asked Commissioner Sarah Lopez to read this proclamation.
Thank you so much. Whereas the Week of the Young Child is an annual celebration of the National Association for the Education of Young Children, the world's largest early childhood education association. The Week of the Young Child's purpose is to focus public attention on the need of young children, their families, and to recognize the early childhood programs and the professionals that meet the needs of the children who attend those programs. And whereas the first five years of a child's life are the period of the most rapid brain development and lays the foundation for all future learning, children need skilled, educated, competent, and consistent early childhood educators to foster their development. And whereas high-quality early childhood education depends on high-quality early childhood educators who ensure that children with support of their families have the early experiences they need for a strong foundation. And whereas high-quality early childhood programs provide important benefits to children, families, and our community. In 2023, Wichita and Sedgwick County had almost 700 programs for children birth to five, serving over 11,000 children. These programs are supported by early childhood professionals who make an impact on the children, the families, and the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that Chairman Ryan K. Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 6th through 12th, 2024 as the Week of the Young Child, and declare that early childhood educators should be valued and respected for the important roles that they play in the lives of the children of our community. And so, Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation, and I move that we will adopt this as read.
I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And to accept this is Janelle Dean and Ann Gaskin with the Early Childhood Professionals Organization.
Good morning.
Thank you. My name is Janelle Dean, and this is my colleague, Ann Gaskin. Um, the Early Childhood Professionals Organization and the Early Childhood Directors Organization are local, um, membership organizations that support childcare providers in various roles. These professionals support children and families through their daily work to provide a strong foundation for children. The first five years of a child's life is the most crucial time for growth and development. High-quality childcare supports children during the most important period of their lives and benefits the families and the community. We are celebrating these individuals who make an impact on children and families in the community with our ninth annual Week of the Young Child Impact Awards on Saturday, April 28th. This year, we have over 200 early childhood professionals nominated in various roles in the childcare field that were nominated by families they served to share the impact they are making on the children they serve. Thank you to the Sedgwick County Commission for acknowledging the impact of early childhood professionals in our community and recognizing their hard work and dedication. And I'd also like to invite you, we're having an Impact Awards Ceremony on Saturday, April 28th, at 2 o'clock at the Sedgwick County Extension Office, if you would like to see that. So we would love attendance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, any questions or comments? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you for coming again this year. I'm really looking forward to the award ceremony, planning on trying to get there, but, um, and we will take a picture here in just a moment, but I just really want to appreciate the work that you do here because we all know that, um, childcare is such, is so hard right now, just in general, in this community. And one thing that I think gets overlooked a lot is how, how we treat the professionals in the space that are gearing our children up for the next step in life. And so just, I very much appreciate the work you're doing as we're trying to look at where our twins are going to go soon. Um, it just reminds you of the importance of, of that role that you guys play, and it's just, it's, it's so valuable. So thank you for being here and allowing us to celebrate with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Okay, very good. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item F, Proclamation Declaring National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Okay, Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, this is our fourth proclamation today, and we didn't, we didn't save the best to last because they've all been really good, but this one is very important as well. So, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and medics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who call 911. And whereas, the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services are public safety telecommunications, which is the 911 office. Whereas, public safety telecommunications, who monitor activities by radio and provide information to ensure safety, are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics. And whereas, the Sedgwick County Emergency Communication Public Safety Telecommunicators have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, the suppression of fires, and the treatment of patients. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job this past year. Now therefore, be it resolved that Chairman Ryan K. Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 14th through the 20th, 2024 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, in honor of the men and women who, whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. So I, it was an honor to read that, and, uh, I'd make a motion that we approve the proclamation.
Yeah, second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And here to accept is our Assistant Director, or I'm not sure your official title, Elena, but, uh, Elena Moreno is here to accept the award, or the proclamation.
Thank you. Elena Moreno, Deputy Director, is the official title of Emergency Communications. Uh, I just want to thank you all for recognizing our staff. We have such a great, dedicated staff, and they just work tirelessly all the time, day in, day out, holidays, weekends, missing things with their kids, and we just appreciate your support also. This year has been quite a year, and we're excited to just not only recognize them this week, but every day.
Absolutely.
Very good.
Yeah, Elena, uh, thank you. Uh, you're right. It's, uh, this has been, uh, some challenging last few years. Uh, we did a total remodel of the 911 building office, so you all had to relocate to our backup center out at Wichita State University. So every, and citizens didn't even realize that, that we were under construction at the main office, and you had your, your, uh, staff and everybody there. We had the, uh, update of the CAD system, which is the dispatch system, um, and that was a large task, uh, in, combined with that. And then we had, uh, a couple years of, of a staffing shortage and compensation challenges. So you had a lot on your plate, besides just answering, uh, 911, can I help you? So there was a lot. And, uh, I want you to know that, that the Commission was very engaged in supporting you. Um, we do receive letters or compliments on various departments, and we receive complaints sometimes on departments, and, and a lot, often the complaints that we would hear, uh, we didn't hear, uh, when people are in distress and they don't decide, they don't remember, oh, I want to call my Commissioner and say, thank you, 911. But if they felt like it was a problem, or if, uh, the dispatch, you know, uh, wrongfully gets accused of, of stuff, in my opinion. But, uh, just know that between you and your staff, the call-takers, the dispatchers, the trainers, and the ongoing training, and the IT support, uh, it, it's clearly appreciated, at least from my perspective, and I believe from the, from the rest of the Commissioners. So please extend my heartfelt, uh, congratulations and thanks for all they do, especially on 4th of July, Christmas Eve, Mother's Day, when everybody else is out celebrating, and, and that's, that staff is there taking calls. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was debating whether I would do this during the other, at the end of the meeting today, or do it right now. But since you're here, I think I'll take this opportunity to, to extend my thanks and my appreciation for your, for your, uh, organization and for your team. Yesterday during the City Council meeting, uh, Wichita City Council meeting, that yesterday, there were some comments made by the public that I thought were very negative and, and frankly uninformed, and very critical of 911. And I'm a little bit defensive right now. Uh, it's not that I believe we've, uh, achieved all the improvements that can be made. I believe there are still opportunities ahead. Uh, thankfully, we're creating a Citizens Advisory Board, which I think is going to be very helpful. We have, uh, other, uh, other things that are in play right now that I think are going to do other, nothing other than reveal, if you will, opportunities for us to improve 911. Uh, but here's the thing. Um, a few years ago, before many of the Commissioners were on this bench, we, we were understaffed, we were underpaid, we did have some problems. But we've invested a huge amount of, of, we've invested, if you will, in the organization of 911 in many, many different ways. And the organization today is not the same organization it was three or four years ago. Is it perfect? No, but no one's perfect. Uh, is there opportunities for improvement? Of course there are. Some of the comments made yesterday was, if you call 911, um, you're just going to get put on hold. They may not even, it's like if they ever get back to you type of thing. At the end of the day, uh, 911 puts out metrics, and they're actually quite impressive, the number of calls that are taken per day, or uh, how many calls per any period, per year, for example. Um, we are, and we are approaching fully-staffed status, which has never happened since I've been here. And, um, it reflects, I think, on the investments that's been made on, uh, by this Commission and by our management team, and by the citizens of Sedgwick County, to improve the training, uh, the workspace, the technology. Um, everything about 911 has taken a, a major step forward. And I also want to say, I, I appreciate what they do. The, the, to that narrative, uh, most calls are never put on hold. Very few calls are put on hold, and by the way, sometimes when they say put on hold, it might be for one second. But that's a status that may be reported without reference, that it was for one second. It may be, maybe it's on hold for five seconds. But that is a, it's irrelevant to understand when someone says I'm put on hold. If, if you knew it was for five seconds, it might change your opinion of what's actually going on. The, at the end of the day, sometimes calls come in, dozens of calls in just a very short time, and they sometimes have to put them on hold because they're managing those calls. The only other option, of course, is to increase property taxes and to increase the size of our workforce there, to the point that no one's ever put on hold. But no community ever, no community anywhere in the United States would take that position, because it's not efficient and effective public safety. At the end of the day, we have to, uh, strike a balance between a very good amount of professionals that can answer those calls and manage, manage, managing those calls as they come in. Doesn't mean we're not doing a great job. I think we are. Uh, the end of the day, it's, it's probably not reasonable to say that no call will ever not be put on hold. Um, it just, it's just a part of the nature of a 911 organization. Um, it's not a negative thing. It simply says, you're doing your job, and we try to get those, to get to those calls as quickly as possible. And most of those calls are handled very quick, actually immediately, if not very, very quickly, within seconds after they come in. So, the end of the day, um, I want to make sure that your staff knows, I, I took that comment kind of offensively. I'm on your side. I'm defending you. I believe that we have a great organization. Uh, I know there's opportunities for improvements. We're going to continue to work on that together. But I appreciate what you do. I appreciate your staff. I want them to know, we appreciate them. This resolution, this, this proclamation today is timely, because we don't celebrate our, our emergency, emergency communications, I think, to the degree we need to. They've been, uh, beat up in the media, they've been beat up in the community, they've been beat up on social media. At the end of the day, when you know what's going on, uh, I think I'm, I'm so impressed. Again, not to say that we've arrived, we haven't, there's still opportunities, but man, we've done a great job improving that organization over the last several years, especially. Reflects on our management team, reflects on the Commissioners for investing, and reflects on the leadership in the organization that has actually been a great partner, I think, of us, uh, being, having real conversations about where we can, where we can do better. So as we celebrate today, these, uh, these professionals, I want them to know, I'm on your side. I, I am there to support any way I possibly can. I love what you do. We, we trust what you do. We depend on what you do. And I know if I call 911, I'm going to get the very best public safety person, answer that phone to help me in my worst day, my worst day ever. They're going to be right there to help me get through that problem. And I know that they, they're extremely important, and we have a great system. We don't need to, uh, to be critical and negative all the time. Let's celebrate the good things. I appreciate what former Speaker said. We don't, we rarely send out a thank you note to those that are doing good. We only hear about the complaints. At the end of the day, it's almost all good. It's a little bit of bad, but we take those negative things, we springboard off those to make it better. So again, I just want to say, uh, uh, please extend my appreciation to your staff, and to your Director, and to all, everyone involved in what you do, because this, this, uh, this conversation needs to happen, and, and we need to celebrate what's actually happening that's great in Sedgwick County. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for being here. I, I won't repeat a whole lot of the things, because I, I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Howell said. But I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that the service you provide to this community, public safety, would not function without you. And so I hope that, um, your staff knows how much we appreciate them, and we appreciate the work that you do, day in and day out. And, and it, I can't imagine how emotionally hard your job has to be. And when you leave work, hearing the stories you've heard throughout the day, not knowing the resolutions that's come from them, and you're hearing from so many people on the, on the worst day that they've had, it's just, it's unbelievable, the amount of pressure that you guys have to be under all the time because of those things. And so I, I just want everybody to know that we value your work, and, and I'm, I'm really proud of the Commission and how we've prioritized 911, and really making sure that, that your staff knows that we see them as, um, public safety servants, and that we're, we're treating you guys like that. And, um, I think some of the things that we've already done, but things that we're going to continue to do, will continue to, to prove that point. And if there's ever anything that you see that, um, we can do better on, on your behalf, I hope that you will share that with us, because, um, you are critical to public safety. And I, and I just want our community to realize that. So thank you for the work that you do. Um, we are unbelievably grateful to you and to your leadership, um, and just appreciate you being here, and I'm so grateful that we get to celebrate, um, you guys this week, although we should be celebrating you all the time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Uh, and thanks for everything that you do. Uh, public safety is our number one priority, and, and we're going into the budget cycle right now, and, and you're going to see that public safety is our number one priority. We appreciate what you do greatly. And I just want to echo the comments of all the other Commissioners, so that you know that you have 100% support from this board for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elena, thank you. Please, make sure your staff understands and, and how much this proclamation, what it, what it does mean. I, to put a bow on all these comments, I come to your building, when I do come to your building, I walk down the hall, and there's a room that not many people see. It's a quiet room.
Right.
And it struck me the first time I walked in that hall, and I saw that, is to the gravity of what it is that those individuals that are call-takers and dispatchers have to do. 1,100 calls a day, on average, 1,100.
We're going up. Summertime is gonna, we're already seeing the busy, the busy summer that we're going to have coming through.
And nearly every call is someone having one of the worst moments of their life. And these individuals take the call, they are conduits to public safety, and then they have to hang up, and they get right back to the board and take another one. And that room just struck me, because there's times they have to go, and they have to decompress from what they just went through. Um, and so as we celebrate Telecommunicators Week, and your call-takers and your dispatchers, it's a proclamation that's just, it's the least we can do to let them know how much this community appreciates them. So please take that message back to your staff.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments, Item G, Resolution Appointing Vaughn Fox to the Sedgwick County 5th District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Wagner.
Thank you. Chairman Justin Wagner, County Counselor, this item, uh, would appoint Vaughn Fox to Commissioner Howell's, uh, 5th District Citizens Advisory Board. The resolution is in order, and the recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Well, Chairman, I just wanted to, uh, say that Vaughn Fox is sharp as a tack. Uh, he lives in an area of my district that needs to have representation, and, uh, Vaughn has lived there, uh, very, very long time. He's a expert on the history of the community. He's, uh, an avid supporter of Sedgwick County, and, uh, just want to say, I think he's a perfect fit for this advisory board. So, uh, I was really struggling trying to find just the right person. What I thought about you, my friend, I, I just thought this is the perfect appointment. So, uh, I'm so glad you chose to be a part of this today. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we would, uh, uh, in fact, uh, appoint Vaughn Fox to Citizens, Citizens Board Number Five.
Yeah, and I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And here is our County Clerk, Kelly Arnold, is here to, uh, swear in, uh, Mr. Vaughn Fox.
I've broken right arm, so I'll try.
Yes.
You're doing good. Thank you. All right. I do solemnly swear that I will support
District Five Citizens Advisory Board, so help me God.
So, help me God, I, I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Kelly.
And if you'd like to say words, you can right there.
Yeah. Of course, my name's Vaughn Fox, I live at 1945 South Parkwood Lane. I want to thank Commissioner Beatty and all the other commissioners, Howell, Lopez, Dennis, and Meitzner. I'm a fifth generation Kansan, possibly six, it hasn't been decided yet on my mother's side. Anyway, I, I hope I can do some good in this position, and maybe some of this go over to the other commissions to what we come up with on this board. I also want to thank, first of all, all the people that have served in the military. I know Colonel Dennis has served, I know Commissioner Howell has, I don't know about any of the other commissioners, but I want to thank them. I'd like to thank all the people in the Sheriff's Department that have served, some of them have given their life, all the police people, all the fire department people, all of those people that have served, I think that's very important. The 911 people, what a job they do, what a hard job they do, I'd like to get that out. And anyway, thank you for this appointment, to your unanimous support, and I'll stand for any questions if you have them, and otherwise, thank you so much. I appreciate your introduction, Commissioner Howell. I've been a longtime friend. I'll give you, I'll tell you one thing about him, he's a stand-up guy. Years ago, there came a point where I think he thought I was gonna run against him in an election. I went to the election commissioner's office, which was also his sister-in-law, and I, I went in there and never said a word, and she thought I was running against him, and I actually went in there to tell her, he doesn't even know this story, that I was not, and I had a box, nobody knows this, it's a true story, I've never shared it, I had two signatures in that, to support me, and I went in there to tell her I was not running against him, and I couldn't anyway because I was also a precinct committee man, and you can't be in two offices at once, so it would have been impossibility. But Jim never took it to heart, and we've remained friends over all these years, so he is a stand-up guy.
Well, I'll just say, I'll just say, as a final comment here, we are friends, I, I'm glad you didn't run against me, you probably would have beat me.
No, no, I wouldn't have.
Anyway, you know what, he's well-known in southeast Sedgwick County, southeast Wichita, and he's one of the community leaders over there, and I've always respected you, I know that you're very smart, actually, smart as a whip. You are, I know you're committed to this, in fact, you have a lot of bandwidth left, I'm trying to think of how else we can use you here because I know you have some bandwidth left, and you want, you want to get even further involved in, in everything, so I just want to say I appreciate you dedicating your time to, to this purpose. I think you're gonna be a great fit to this board, and by the way, I want to just also point out that our, our chairman of the cabot board is standing behind you, his name is John Nicholas, and he wants, he wants to make your acquaintance as well, so John's gonna welcome you to the board as well.
Okay.
And I know that you're gonna be a great fit. So, again, well, thank you to John, and thank you to you, Vaughn.
All right. Thank, thank all of you.
Fox, thank you, sir. We appreciate you and your willingness to serve.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Very good. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item. Very good.
New business, new business. Item H, Project Search Graduation, Graduation Recognition.
Project Search Graduation, always a celebration here at the county. Jeanette Livingston.
Good morning, Commissioners, building some anticipation, so. Yep. Okay. Well, good morning, Commissioners, Jeanette Livingston, Deputy Director of the Sedgwick County Developmental Disability Organization, part of the Department on Ageings and Disabilities. Glad to be here this morning to recognize this will be our 10th class of Project Search interns, and as you know, the Project Search is a collaborative between a school district and a business designed to give students with disabilities in their final year of school some employment experience to build those skills and hopefully achieve employment upon graduation, and so we're super happy to introduce our 10th class this year. I'll start off with Christopher Kautowski. So, Christopher interned at the Sedgwick County IT Department and the Print Shop. He also interned at Martin Interconnect, working in a small assembly department. So, Chris proved he's very dependable, flexible team leader through his internships. Would you like to say anything? You don't have to. Okay. If you don't want to, say thank you.
Thank you.
There we go. So, Khan interned in the Sedgwick County Print Shop and at Martin Interconnect Services, which is a wire manufacturing plant. He enjoys a variety of tasks, working around people, and he's flexible and hardworking, and fluent in Vietnamese, so what a catch as far as an employee. Khan, did you want to say anything?
No.
Okay. All right. You can go sit down. So, Zach Stringer. Zach interned with CommCare and the Sedgwick County Department of Corrections. He engaged in office and clerical work. He also interned at Goodwill in the Back Room Warehouse. Zach is a people person and happy to do whatever it is needed to do his job. He's very flexible and likes to work independently. All right, Zach, anything you want to say? Okay.
Thank you, Zach.
Montreal Allen. So, Montreal, he interned with Transportation in the Kitchen and the CDC Kitchen at St. Francis Hospital, where he performed cleaning and delivery duties, among other things. He's a very outgoing young man who enjoys working with people. Would you like to say anything?
Nope.
Okay. Isaac Bakara. All right. Isaac interned with Distribution and Environmental Services at St. Francis, but also at Textron Aviation Wire. He is a very outgoing young man who enjoys working with people, and one day would like to coach football.
All right.
All right. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Opportunity. Yeah.
Very good, Isaac. Thank you, Isaac.
Aiden Kiyavixey. So, Aiden interned in Distribution and Assembly Kits at St. Francis, as well as Spirit Aerosystems Systems Production Center. He's soft-spoken, spoken, very kind, and enjoys working with others. Aiden, would you like to say anything?
Um.
Okay. As I mentioned, the goal is always for our students to achieve employment upon graduation. It's April, they're getting ready to graduate, and one of the ways we help support our Project Search interns is by hosting a virtual reverse job fair. It's going on from April 1st to May 3rd, so employers can log on at the scprojectsearch.com, register, and you can see all of the Project Search interns from Wichita Public Schools, but well as Derby and Mays as well. And so, anyone looking for an entry-level employee that wants to work will show up for work and is happy to be there, please feel free to check out our virtual reverse job fair. But I also wanted to thank all of the other staff behind the scenes that really make this program run, including with USD 259, our teacher, Chris, who was behind us. We also have a teacher at St. Francis, that's Victoria, Natalie Crowell, and Tracy Corals, as well as John Pinka, the principal there at Dunlap Transition, and also really appreciate the supervisors at Sedgwick County, we could not do it without them. We, we could use more internships for next year, so we will, I will be out recruiting departments that would like to also participate for next year. Last but not least, we are hosting a reception on the sixth floor after the meeting today, so if anyone in the audience is interested in maybe talking to any of the interns, if you have open positions, or if you'd just like a cookie, come up and, and check it out. Thank you.
Very good. Well, Jeanette, we appreciate the Developmental Disability Organization and you guys collaborating this with the school districts, with small business and big business here in this community, and, and the departments, the 46 departments here in Sedgwick County Government, so, well done. This is always such a moving opportunity and ceremony, and we're, we're grateful for the work you do in preparing them to enter into the workforce and have great success. So, kudos to you guys in DDO and all you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We are, oh yes, we are gonna make, Commissioner Howell made a motion to receive and file, I'll second that motion, and then I'll call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And now, we are, all those that have been waiting, we're gonna pause the meeting, and we're gonna pop out front here and take some pictures so we can celebrate you guys, so five, 10 minutes.
Exactly. How do they? Yeah. 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 Exactly. How do they? Yeah.
Item I, adoption of the 2024 Federal Legislative Platform.
Ms. Tanya Cole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I am here this morning to present to you and finalize for adoption the Sedgwick County Federal Legislative Platform. So, our legislative platforms are a foundation of a focused strategy and serve as a reference guide for legislative and policy positions and objectives. So, we focus this year our efforts on support for transportation, public safety, railway, and federal funding and spending, which is important to Sedgwick County to continue to maintain the high level of services and programs. And so, we've discussed this, I think, a couple of times at staff meetings. And so, if you'd like, I can go through these just at a very high level and discuss what we have on our platform. If you'd like me to do that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. So, for congressionally-directed spending requests, and you should have a copy at your, at your place. Okay. We've got two items that we're focusing on. The first one is the Arc 95 project. So, that is our Kansas River Crossing and 95th Street, which is in District Two and Five. And so, the history on that is, in 2008, there was a South Area Transportation Study, and that was the first study that identified a need for a Southern Corridor for future transportation enhancements. And so, the request here is for a $4.88 million in congressionally-directed spending. And so, that's the first project there. Second project is to support funding for the county's Public Safety Preparedness Warehouse and Emergency Operations Center. So, the county is asking for $2 million on this project, and the project plans to construct a new facility providing several necessary features under one roof, which includes a FEMA-rated emergency operations center, emergency management administrative offices, and a warehouse conducive to receive, distribute, and store emergency preparedness equipment and supplies. And so, I think you're aware that we will continue to apply for the Defense Community Infrastructure Program grant, and this project totals just under $16 million for, in total, for this project. Then we have three transportation projects. The first one is the Northwest Expressway. This is in District Three and Four. So, this project is, entails the construction of a new access-controlled highway from US 54 at the city of Goddard to K-96 between Tyler Road and Ridge Road at the city of Mays. It would extend the interstate-level highway system at Mays to West Wichita and Goddard. Construction estimate on this is $519.2 million for this particular project. Second project, then, is the reconstruction of 151st Street West between 53rd Street North and Highway K-96. Total cost of this project is $4.3 million. This project would replace an existing cold-mix asphalt road at 150th Street West with a two-lane industrial road, excuse me, industrial, let me start over, with a two-lane industrial standard paved roadway with appropriate shoulders and improved roadside drainage ditches. And then, third transportation project is reconstruction of the south half-mile of 135th Street West between 53rd and 61st Street North, and that's in District Three. Total cost of this project is $1.2 million. Purpose of this project would replace an existing rule gravel gravel road at 135th Street West with a two-lane industrial standard paved roadway with appropriate shoulders and improved roadside drainage ditches. Next project, then, is the Amtrak Extension. And so, this would be an extension of Amtrak service from Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, into Newton, Kansas. Amtrak has expressed support for extending the Heartland Flyer North, known as the Northern Flyer, through Wichita and onto Newton to connect these two major routes. Ridership along this corridor is expected to be high enough to make this route successful. And so, Commissioner Meitzner, I think, can speak to this more if more information's needed on that. We've also included a two-pager fact sheet on the Amtrak. And then, next page, we have an additional, something that we added there on federal spending. I'd like to read this. It states, "Support efforts to improve the nation's fiscal outlook and reduce long-term fiscal risks by reducing the deficit, stabilizing deficits and debt as a share of the economy over the long run, and keeping the economic burden of debt within historical norms." That's a statement that I think you asked me to add at the last staff meeting. And then, we have ARPA funding, "Extend obligation period by one year to December 31, 2025, and expenditure period by one year to December 31, 2027." And then, we have the Fiscal Year 2025 Federal Appropriations. I did add bold piece in there, so I'll read that off. "Support federal programs in fiscal year 2025 appropriations legislation that fund vital county services, provide formula funding, and fund competitive federal grants such as..." And then, there is a long list of programs and grants under particular federal programs. And so, that concludes the federal legislative agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions. Once this is adopted, our federal legislative platform is provided to our lobbyist, Jim Davenport, with Thorn Run Partners to work with our congressional delegation. And so, I would recommend that you adopt the 2024 Legislative Platform.
Okay. Very good. Tanya, appreciate all the work you've done on this and this presentation today. Any questions or comments? We've gone over these things a few times through staff meetings. Commissioner Dennis?
First of all, I want to thank Tanya again. Did a lot of work on both our state legislative agenda and on our federal legislative agenda. We appreciate the effort. Also, it, I don't know if Commissioner Howell wants to comment on this, because he brought it up, but I do support it on talking about the national deficit. I did have an opportunity to meet with Senator Marshall last week and let him know it was probably going to be on our legislative agenda. And it sounds strange that, in one hand, we're saying, hey, we'd like these projects, but on the other hand, we are very worried about the future of the United States with the national defense especially. When you consider our current deficit is close to $35 trillion, and out of that national deficit, we're spending almost $1 trillion a year on interest, which is exceeding our national defense budget. So, anytime we're spending more on interest than we spend on protecting our nation, we got our priorities backwards. So, it sounds strange that, on one hand, we're gonna ask for something, but on the other hand, we want to make sure that we don't contribute to the the national debt. But if, we have to protect our citizens also. If everyone else is getting a piece of pie, I don't want our citizens left out, because we're paying taxes to the federal government. And so, we need the support of the federal government in order to do the things we need to do here. So, it sounds a little contradictory, honestly, in our legislative agenda, but in my heart, I don't believe it is, because I look at the future. As a retired military officer, I want to make sure that we defend our nation first and foremost. Public safety is our number-one concern. That's gotta be the number-one concern for our national government. So, I support this, and whenever the motion is made, I will support the motion to support our legislative agenda. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Howell?
Commissioner, Chairman, thanks for the chance to speak to this. I appreciate Commissioner Dennis making an introduction to that point. And if I was to ask people in the community, what do you really want from the federal government? I have never heard them say, "Spend more money." I have heard them say just the opposite. And as I reflect on the Constitution that clarifies that the federal government is a limited government, it has things it's supposed to do, and that's very list, it's a very short list of things it's supposed to do. But we've got accustomed to the federal government essentially providing services to almost every aspect of local and state government. And I would just say, this evolution of of our country is is not healthy for the future of our country. I think we're right at $34 trillion in debt now. I'm losing track. I actually have a debt, debt-tracking app on my phone. I look at that about once a month, and it's just, I shake my head. I think, what are we doing? It is, it is illogical, it is irresponsible to think we're going to continue to spend money the way we are as a country, and that the future of our country simply, we can survive doing this insanity. It is insane for us to think we can, we can actually print and borrow cash to provide these services. And I am, I'm offended that the government continues to do what they do. I think we have to have a platform. Here's a part of the problem, and I think it's a very difficult issue, because federal government seems intent to hand out money. And with that respect, we want to essentially get our fair share. Okay? But I wish they would just stop. I wish, you know, I look at local government and say, it's actually really hard to find places to cut. It doesn't do damage to what we provide. The most important services we provide will be damaged if we cut our property tax spending. I, it is, is a very difficult thing to do, and I think it's almost by design. The things that are the most frivolous spending, the things we look at and say, that what a waste of money, that money almost always comes from, sometimes the state, but mostly time, most time, federal government. They're, they're inserting money into our lives in untold ways, and we get dependent on it and almost expect it. It is, and by the way, I don't want to participate in the insanity by expecting more services for less taxes. I think the government has two choices. Either they should increase taxes to cover these expenditures, or they should cut spending to be within the taxation that they currently are set at. But it's insanity for us to continue to to expect these, this level of spending at that level of taxation. And I don't like it. At the end of the day, this platform asks for specific projects, which, again, I support this platform in in that regard. But to me, my biggest, my biggest call for the government is to become responsible. They're, by, they're the poster child of irresponsible. They're, just a couple of things, you know, they haven't had a balanced budget in, it seems like, forever. It's been so long, I can't remember the last time they actually had a balanced budget. Never-ending wars, handing out billions of dollars around the world. I, there's so many things we could talk about that, in my opinion, are, are urgent issues that we need to actually focus on. If I talk about, what is my, what's my real federal legislative platform, that the people want us to urge our federal government to do these things, it's not to spend more money. I stumble, I was doing some thought on this the other day, and I tried to find out, you know, who's got, who has the best data. And with all due respect, our, our federal lobbyists sent back a couple of other websites, which I'm still trying to figure out, why these three websites have such a, a conflict between them. The one I send, the one I tend to trust the most is called the TaxFoundation.org. They seem to be politically neutral. They present data in a very fact-based format, and they actually show that we provide $4.88 from Kansas to the federal government for every dollar they hand back. And every dollar that comes back into the state of Kansas has, of course, federal government strings attached. I don't like that. I think, at the end of the day, if they would back off and let us provide for ourselves, we would actually be better, better off as a state. States have unlimited powers. The federal government has limited powers. And I think we have it backwards. But with this data, out of 50 states, we are tied for dead last, according to the TaxFoundation.org. Dead last, where we receive 20, 27% of our state revenue comes from federal government. The highest in the country is 57.3%. That's for Alaska, and 55% for Louisiana. You can go on down from there. But out of all 50 states, according to TaxFoundation.org, Kansas is dead last. So, you wonder why our taxes are high in Sedgwick County and in Kansas? Could it be that we're exporting our tax dollars to the feds and we're receiving less than our surrounding states? You wonder why, why does it seem like Missouri and Oklahoma and Texas and Colorado and Nebraska all seem to be doing better on tax rates? Well, could it be that we're sending our tax dollars out and we're not receiving dollars back the way that they are? We, we thought, we believe that taxes and services should be fair. I don't think this is fair. And so, I would argue that I think that what has been happening is, is actually been very detrimental to Kansas as a state and consequently to Sedgwick County citizens as, as a, as a consequence. The other two websites that our lobbyists sent us, they, they paint a different picture. They show us as middle pack. I can't, I cannot understand the, why these different websites have different, different analysis. So, I'm gonna be doing, I'll continue doing, doing some work on that. I did post this on my Facebook page, if someone wants to see the data that I, I have, that I've presented. I've done a lot of work on this particular data from, from TaxFoundation.org. I do a tax talk, and in my tax talk, I actually present, if you will, a lot of details about how Kansas taxes are different than other states. And they actually have extreme detail about exact tax rates, exact dollars, in about 50 different ways. And so, to me, this is excellent data, and I think that the TaxFoundation.org seems to be a trustworthy website. So, I am concerned. I would like to see the federal platform emphasize that point more. It's buried on page seven of our platform. Me personally, I would be voting for this today. If I could influence the changes in this, I would say to move that to the front, because I think it is a bit strange to say, please spend more money here and here and here and here. We want all this extra help. And then on page seven, say, please don't, please don't spend too much money and balance the budget. So, with that, I think it's slightly out of order. I would, I will, I will support the platform, because this is really a messaging to our delegation as well as to our lobbyists. I think they understand that. I would, I would rather see if they could prioritize what's the most important for our constituents of our state. It's the health of our country. The long-term outlook of our country, fiscal health of our country, needs to be addressed, number one. And right now, we're not doing it as a country. And I'm, I'm a little bit, I'm very worried about the future of our country, the future of our, of our community, our grandkids, our great-grandkids. What are they gonna be putting up with? Because at this rate, rate of spending, I don't think it can sustain itself forever. Something's going to have to give. And if we're worried about the future of our country, this is the, this is a thing we have to deal with. You can't just do business as usual. And right now, business as usual just continues to borrow and print money on the backs of our, of our future generations, and it cannot continue that way. Thank you, Chairman.
Very good. Okay. Thank you again for the work you do on all this, all of our platforms. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the 2024 Federal Legislative Platform.
Second.
Motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item, please.
Item J, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on April 11, 2024.
Here he is, Joe Thomas.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on April 11 has resulted in two items that we are seeking your approval. The first one is the tandem axle dump truck. This is equipped with a salt spread, salt sand spreader, and liquid anti-icing and de-icing system for fleet management and public works. This recommendation is to utilize the Sourcewell Contract 060920-KTC, and that's with Wichita Kenworth, in the amount of $388,922. And our final item, CRAC, C-R-A-C, which stands for the Computer Room Air Conditioning Units for the Historic Courthouse Project Services. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Vertiv Corporation in the amount of $297,737.79. Be happy to Be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Okay, two items here. Any questions or comments? Okay, see Bo here? Okay, thank you, Joe. I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts, the regular meeting on April 11, 2024.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Bo. Okay, I'm going to pause, if that's okay, the B O C C meeting and call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One, meeting of Wednesday, April 17, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
President.
Commissioner Dennis.
President.
Commissioner Howell.
President.
Commissioner Lopez.
President.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
Public agenda.
There are, there is no one signed up for public agenda. Next item.
Consideration of minutes, Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of March 6, 2024.
Okay, we'd be able to take Items A, B, and C together?
Just because I believe we had a Commissioner who's absent on the meeting on March 6, I'd suggest two separate items at least.
Very good. We'll take Item A. So I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Meeting Minutes of March 6, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, next item.
Item B, Fire Meeting Minutes of March 20, 2024.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Meeting Minutes of March 20, 2024.
Second.
Motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item C, Fire Meeting Minutes of April 3, 2024.
Moving through them. I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Meeting Minutes of April 3, 2024.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, next item.
Consent agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent Items D and E on the fire agenda. Item D is also on the regular agenda, Item S, under consent, that's the quick claim deed to the county fire district. And Item E is our termination of government services to Derby for inspection, which we have talked about multiple times in public meetings.
Yeah, we have. Okay, any questions or comments on any of these consent items? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve consent Items D and E.
Second.
Motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Other.
Anything under other? Saying none. Next item.
Executive session.
There will be, and there is no executive session for Fire District, so I will adjourn the governing body of Fire District Number One and return us back to the Board of County Commission meeting. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Chairman and Commissioner, again, Tom Stoltz, recommending approval of consent Items K through double-letter A-D, with the exception of Item Z, that is a young estate addition plat, that had technical error, that will come back next meeting.
Right. Okay. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Saying none. I'll make a motion to approve, to approve consent agenda, Items K through A-D, with the exception of Item Z.
Second.
Motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
There are no legislative issues because the legislature is out of session, so we'll move on. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Any committee reports? Saying none. Next item.
Other.
Other. We are moving right along, aren't we? Next item, please.
Executive session.
Commissioner Lopez?
I moved that the Board of County Commissioners recessed into executive session for 15 minutes until 10:52, 10:52, for preliminary discussions related to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of discussing the potential purchase of land and buildings for the use of county departments and the Board of County Commissioners returned to this room from executive session at 10:52.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, we'll rejoin you here shortly.[935.38] Well, we'll rejoin you here shortly.[742.93]